All right, it's six o'clock. We'll call the Board of Trustees meeting to order. Please rise for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sherry, can you roll call?
Sparks?
Here.
Zagami?
Here.
Ermely?
Here.
Ziegler?
He called. He's absent, excuse me. Called this morning. Conflict.
Maloney?
Here.
John?
Here.
Feeny?
Here.
Okay, public comments. Does anybody in the audience wish to make any comments about anything or anything on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Presentations, we have nothing scheduled. Minutes from previous board meeting, June 17, 2019, Board of Trustees.
Move to approve.
Second by Maloney, second by Zagami. On the question, call in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes carried. Written correspondence, number five, search for candidates to fill vacancy on Rib Mountain Metropolitan Sewerage District Board. In your packet, we have some information on this. We had a party that resigned, so I'm just putting this out to the trustees to kind of list what the requirements are for the commissioners on there. So if anybody has either a recommendation or knows somebody that may have some interest, please forward that on to me or the Rib Mountain Metropolitan Sewerage District Board, and we will try to get that order to them for consideration.
It cannot be anybody from the board, right? Is that correct? That's what you were saying?
That is correct, yes.
And it can be, it's got to be a back candidate. I believe that resigned was a Weston resident.
Right, yeah.
So it should be a village of Westons.
If Bob Savern was been under all that time, wow, that's awesome. Holy man.
So it just went out there, so if anybody knows anyone or anybody watching the telecast from Weston, please let us know. Okay, reports from, reports, minutes from boards, committees, and commissions. Nothing from the CDA, number seven, nothing from EMPD, eight, extra trial zoning. Anything, Jen?
No.
Okay, number nine, finance, number ten, human resources are the only two we have reports on. Motion by Ermely to acknowledge.
Second.
Second by John. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Reports from administrator, Mr. Donner is on vacation, but he did put a, put his report in the packet. Anybody has any questions, please read that. Clerks, no report, anything to add, Sherry? Finance? John? Fire EMS, Matt?
No, sir.
Number 23, Parks and Rec.
Well, we, some of us briefly talked about it. There was an accident on the corner of Ross Avenue and Bob Lane, went through the canoe and kayak launch, damaged some, a tree, some other perennials. They also hit the concrete monument sign. It actually got pushed across Bob Lane. I did submit a loss reporting form to our insurance company this morning. Also contacted Land Art to give us an estimate on landscaping, and then I contacted Washtile on a replacement sign for it. So typically how those things are handled are we submit to our insurance, and then they go after the, the person that, you know, caused the accident. So just to get the process going, I submitted all that today, and then once I receive estimates back, then those get submitted to our insurance company.
Was a reporter at EMPD, so?
Yes. It was. I talked to the chief yesterday.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah. Yeah, so I know that they've, they're quite busy, so, I mean, I don't expect to place port like immediately on it, so I'm sure it'll be a few days on that. And then also, I did an interview with Channel 7 on Friday, and I know Barb's seen it either this morning or last night or something, because July is National Park and Rec Month. So they came over and shot a bunch of footage of our parks on Friday, so they had the skate park, the dog park, the aquatic center, various other things. Did a small bit interview with me on Friday morning, and then they were live from the skate park this morning. So just a little, little blurb on National Park and Rec Month.
That's nice. Can you share that video from that Weston resident with her two dogs?
Oh, the?
That was pretty cool. The blind dog?
Yep. And then I also actually got some feedback today that I'm on forward under the board to regarding outdoor sports complex. This family was over in Lake Hallie this past weekend. They have 54-team tournament over there for fast pitch softball, and they just had some feedback, so I actually sent them a copy of the sports complex feasibility study so they could take a look at that.
Questions for Sean? All right, thanks, Sean. Plan and development, anything, Jen?
I don't have anything to add.
Twenty-five, police, give us a report at the next meeting. Twenty-six, public works. Anything, Mike?
No, just got a lot going on in Schofield, they have, we're there with Norcons, so hopefully everyone's patient with the instructions.
Dodging those little holes in the middle?
Yeah, and then we had a blow up just outside the entrance here Saturday night. Patched that in today.
Technology.
Nothing to add, I report.
Questions. Okay, any questions for Nate? All right, on to the consent agenda. Number 20, is there anything that anybody would like to pull out of consent for consideration? If not, we have items number 20 and 9, 30, and 31, so I'd, number 32, looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Nothing on our ordinances or resolutions. Number 34, unfinished business, discussion and possible action on changing Public Safety Committee roles and responsibilities or discontinuation of the same. I guess I'll, I'll start with this. There's some information on the packet, and we, we put this on the agenda back in May, and at that time staff kind of did some little background on how we would potentially fill the duties from the Public Safety Committee if we did not, if we elected to discontinue the committee. And I think the main reason for, for the, at least to have this on the agenda, you know, the Public Safety Committee, I don't even think it's fair to the members on the Public Safety Committee, because really the, the roles and responsibilities and duties that are assigned as far as oversight goes to both Police Department and Fire Department really fall to the two respective boards and the two respective commissions. And I know we've had some things that have come before the Public Safety Committee, and there was, you know, a little bit of conflict because we really couldn't address it through the committee, and in some respects, it's really not addressed through the board solely. It's up to the membership on those respective oversight committees. And I don't think, I think it's got to be frustrating too for some of the people that have served on the Public Safety Committee, because they really didn't have the ability to really make decisions or give specific direction. I think it was more of an information exchange on those committees. And when you look at what some of the duties are, we had made decisions, I thought staff did a pretty good job kind of laying out what some of those, where some of those decisions should go to on the respective committees, and a couple of those went to the board. When I had a long talk with Administrator Donner about this, and he said really there's, you know, only a couple items that probably the board would have to consider, and he said one is like maybe a once-a-year type thing. And I know we've also had some conflict with some committee meeting assignments, so if we were to discontinue Public Safety, that takes care of the HR committee meeting times where we've had some conflict. And as everybody, I assume as all the board members are aware, we're already short two people on the committee, and it's been canceled probably more times than it's, than it's gone. So, you know, for that reason, I think it's prudent that we discontinue Public Safety. There was some discussion about whether or not we should have a nuisance committee, and, but I didn't want to get those two grouped together. I think it was two separate decisions. So I think the Public Safety Committee, you know, probably should be discontinued, and then have staff look at what those specific things are as they relate to some of the ordinance issues. I know Jen had some comments on, you know, some of those could be potentially planned and commissioned. I know that a lot of these are handled through our, our Taskfare Relations Coordinator. Some will go right from her to the Police Department if it's, you know, ordinance type issues as it relates to nuisance issues versus some of the, you know, the minor issues like, you know, grass mowing, those types of things. So that's kind of the background on it. There's more in the packet. I know we voted and it kind of ended in a tie this last time, but after looking at it a little more, I, I believe that the prudent decision would probably be to discontinue that. I don't think it's fair to our members, and it doesn't serve enough of a, enough of an oversight role to be able to be effective as a committee, you know? And since we have those other committees and commissions, I think it's, it avoids conflict, and we'll better use our resources by possibly creating another committee or putting some of those duties in different committees or the board. Nate?
Previously, I voted against this. I thought that there was a way to combine the, the desire for a nuisance commission and the Public Safety Committee, but in talking with Chief Savage, Chief Schultz, and President Sparks, I didn't find a way to really marry the two proposals. And I agree that while the Public Safety Committee has served a, has served an important role in the past, we need to evolve and, and serve the most good with our limited resources. So I support disbanding the Public Safety Committee and reinstating, or in its place, creating a nuisance commission.
Separately?
Yes.
Okay, are you looking at a motion?
Committee, the commission's different.
Oh, yes, sorry. Misspoke it's a Monday.
And I think for probably just to give staff time, I think it would probably be appropriate to have staff come back with what nuisance issues should be prior to formally making a committee. I mean, that's, that's my thoughts on it.
Yeah, I agree, though, it's just the principle of it.
So there is an ordinance, two ordinance changes, and Keith kind of mentioned them, that will be going, originally we had them going to Public Works and Plan Commission next Monday, and then it would go to Public Safety at their next meeting, and then depending on what happened there, would eventually come to the board. But basically with those two ordinances, there have been some changes on the processes and how we handle nuisance complaints, the enforcement and abatement of them, and including like the weeds, the noxious weeds and the mowing. So basically, a process has been kind of laid out there. We were using, at, this ordinance started last year when Clips was still in existence. So there was a reference change that's being proposed to Public Safety, which could still, I guess, the discussions can come out of the, the next few meetings, or at least those two groups, because someone would have to handle it if the commission or committee, nuisance committee wasn't created. But essentially, it creates a process that allows staff to abate some of those ones that people don't like as much, like the tall grass. We don't want to wait 30 days for being able to do a non-summarated abatement and go in there. So Attorney Edie has outlined a different process that we would use that would handle those faster. And what it does is it gives property owners a chance to object to it in writing to the administrator, and then ask for a hearing in front of whatever committee, I guess, is going to handle that. So we're just starting the discussion. That's something different than what we would have in the past, but it would essentially be a little bit like we were talking before about having a, a committee to handle those situations. I don't know how often anybody would actually file an objection on that. Most likely, they would just cut their grass. But we do have some instances in the village where property owners are not, we can't find them readily. There's one just up the street on Masquer Street where we spend a lot of time hiring somebody to mow there. So these are going through, I actually have them all done, so therefore, they're ready for the packets on, on Monday, so we can have more discussions on that. But that's what we were looking at, was having that as a new process, because the way that we were handling mowing in the past, it, Attorney Edie said we needed to have a set process, so.
Any other comments, Barb?
No, I was just wondering if, you know, as I was reading through that packet, you know, that, because I was sitting there and thinking, okay, they do look at speed limits, and they do look at, you know, some of the other recommendations, and street lights, and, and I was trying to remember all the different things that the Public Safety did, and I, I was kind of going, well, street lights, I think Public Works could handle. Speed limits, I, I guess would probably come to the board, because we actually in the end do the ordinance on speed limits, so.
I thought, I thought staff did a nice job clarifying it all and kind of dovetailing it into different spots. I, I was actually quite, not actually, I was impressed. Actually, it sounds not nice, but I was, I was very impressed with all the work that went into it. So are we looking for a motion?
Yes. I'll move to disband the Public Safety Committee.
Second. Motion by Feeny, second by Maloney. On the question?
Yeah, staff would like to organize for this or subject ordinance?
With, the, the staff has laid out where a lot of those would go, and I think they want a little more work on that, so I'd like to see it on the next agenda, have this finalized. So unless you want to include in the motion to follow the existing recommendations by staff, or you want to discuss those further on the committee assignments?
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment, that we follow staff recommendations.
Okay, so amend the motion to, to discontinue the Public Safety Committee, subject to the recommendations by staff on duties that should be assigned to the various committees and the ordinances that would need to be modified.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion by Feeny to that effect, second by Maloney. On the question?
On the question, in regards to nuisance and property maintenance, it kind of refers to Plan Commission overseeing or the new nuisance committee. Do you want me just to run that by the Plan Commission to see if they're, if they're, I mean, because they're going to look at that ordinance, and they can determine if they're going to want to be that body that does that, or if they would suggest a nuisance committee?
Well, I think, I think with the recommendation, if we can put on, if we're going to put on the next, next meeting whether or not to create a nuisance committee, then we'll have time to talk to the committee prior to that, and then give the board feedback.
Okay, because I do have, those two items are on the agenda, we'll just discuss them and get generalized, you know, we'll just go over those, because it's on Public Works and Plan.
I think it'd be important that what we're going to be shifting from the Public Safety to other areas that we should run and pass then before we do that.
And that's, that's why we'll discuss it at the next board meeting, so we have time to run this by the various committees.
Passed. The committee's accepting those, correct? Because you can't, you can't run it past Public Safety, because they don't meet.
Yeah, they're not going to meet.
They're, it's canceled all the time. So, yeah, I would say to the committees that it's going to or commissioned.
Right, right. Like.
And I, and I think it's something that they should just step up to the plate and take on. It's, I think this is a good rule.
Do you want us to put this on just as an FYI on the agenda, still like, I'm guessing most of this is going to come to Public Works or Plan?
I would put it on for discussion yet, at the committees that are impacted.
Okay.
And then after those committees meet, we can bring that back to the board for further discussion. Because the question still remains on whether to create a nuisance committee or whether those issues will be absorbed on the other committees.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. New business, number 35, disallowance of Judy Gavitt claim from 6419. This is a letter from our insurance carrier.
Second.
Motion denied by Ermely, second by Maloney. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item number 36, training agreement with UW Stevens Point for a business writing workshop, and this came out of HR committee.
Yeah, we, it was going to be a training to help staff with uniform discussion, or I'm sorry, with uniform standards on all, on all correspondence and, sorry, it's been a long day. So the, this is designed to help staff with their professional writing in order to be more clear, concise, and direct. There's the three-hour workshop on Monday, November 11th to address that. I think that, I think that this is a good way to help with our outreach to the village and other news agencies. I, I'll answer any questions to the best of my ability, but I urge passage of this.
Or is there, well, I'll move to approve.
Okay, motion by Maloney. I'll, I'll second it, but I do have some questions.
Sure. Is there a limit on how many people can attend? Or no?
I think when, when they put the proposal together, she took it into consideration how many, yeah, like how many directors and stuff there would be. I'm pretty sure there was a limit.
There is or is not?
I'm pretty sure there was.
Are they coming to the village?
Yes.
It's on the day that.
There shouldn't be any limit, they can, everybody can choose.
If I bring food, can I come?
It says staff and board members, so.
The only reason you can come, Mark.
I'm in the block, yeah.
The only reason is the food.
Yeah, okay, then that's it, done.
It's being planned on the, on November 11th, when we have, when we're closed, it's one of the fall closures.
So if you open to the board member also?
It says there, staff and board members on her proposal. It's a three-hour workshop.
The only question I had was how did this training come up? What was the background behind this?
Fred Schuster.
It originally came from Fred Schuster, who's on the HR committee, in regards to what he thought should be a little higher level of professionalism on some of our memos and drafts and things that went out. So they apparently gone through this program years ago. Ann Matheson, who manages this, did come to one of the HR committee meetings and kind of talked about the curriculum and put this together so it could be done in one setting at one time and have all the employees participate, all the staff and obviously like.
And it sounds like they'll share some of the stuff that we write ourselves, so like, she'll probably maybe look at my minutes and they'll critique them, and maybe the newsletter articles that we write, and they'll critique some of these things.
A few more, a few more questions. Second, has this been done in the past before? So this is the first time. The third question to me, no, how many people, how many people are we expecting to actually sign up? Because I don't want us to spend thousands.
Well, I know that, that the department directors, that's where we're starting.
One-time fee?
Yeah.
Yeah, one-time fee.
Okay, because the only reason why I said I was afraid that we, we spent, we spent that money and then nobody shows up, or there only be one or two people, so.
Well, we're going to make Fred show up.
Okay, as long as we, as long as we know that we'll have staff show up, that'll be great. Now, the last question I have, is this open up to Everest Metro and also Safer as well?
It is not.
Just wanted to be clear.
Because this actually has been talked about for several years, and we just, you know, because Fred was always very, you know, meticulous.
You know, what, why, why couldn't we, I mean, once we get the numbers, and if we don't think it's that much, why couldn't a few, you know, like the EMPD?
We could. I guess we just. For some reason, number 25 is sticking in my mind. Yeah, and I just am not positive.
Are you expecting at least 25 staff from, from Village Weston to be there?
Not at this point. The only people that I know for sure are going to attend are the department directors.
Okay.
I would think that I would have my new economic about my coordinator, Jared, probably, maybe even Valerie. Scott could, could use.
Grant writers.
Yeah, well, those that compile the newsletter.
Newsletter, right, Renee.
It might be a thing, and I don't, I'm just guessing, but it might be a thing where there's only so much materials for 25 people, but maybe 15 more people could just be in the audience, and it's kind of like a train the trainer type thing too, you never know.
Well, Chief Savage, I guess the question I would ask you is, is that something that do you feel Safer would be interested in participating in, if we did open it up for Safer?
We have done similar trainings in-house.
Okay.
I would definitely look at it. I'll be on vacation, but they already hooked.
How many hours is that?
It's, it's three hours.
Really? That's not enough, but that's okay. Because the three hours, 25 people.
Well, they normally, I mean, in years past, in the one that Fred went to, was like a class. I know when I was at Maritza County, they sent a few people to it, and it, it was like a semester class. It was a couple hours, months, every couple weeks, but we just don't have the ability to send that many people away from here for that. So they set up this kind of condensed one for us, and then we're having it on one of those days that we can do some training. So that's why it's set for November 11.
That's what I asked, because there's a lot of material they can, should give to the, to the.
Yeah. When she came, she said that she'd be collecting things from us, so we'll be sending like RFCs and reports and emails and that ahead of time, so. And it's all anonymous, so we won't, I mean, the comments will kind of come back.
So she's got a red pen ready before she?
I'm sure, yeah. We'll know what ours are, but nobody else will.
Some will help, I mean, maybe another time, another year, another whatever, do it again?
Well, or, or maybe this is just a, you know, where you kind of look at a snippet of this, and, and you decide to send two people, you know, two a semester, you know, so that might be the way it is too. You have a question?
I was just going to say, Jen kind of touched on it, where by, I guess, having certain people give their writing samples, you know, they're going to try to focus in on, okay, these are the four major flaws we see in your writing, but then to your point too, I think, you know, that there might be a limit on how many samples of writing they'll send in, but yeah, I think if people want to sit in the audience, I guess I couldn't see how that would be a problem, so.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. And number 37, amendment to section 110.03 sub-6, settle your phone stipend reimbursement.
Yes, so this one is updating the staff that would be eligible for this benefit. Some of the history on this is that there's, some of the staff have been asked to have a second cell phone for work because of the nature of their position. What this would do is instead give them a, give them a, thank you, a stipend for, for their, for their phone bill instead of a second, instead of a second phone. I know that many of us call Administrator Donner on his own phone, so that would be one way to cut down on the need for multiple devices and to, and to save the village a little bit of money with the bills.
So can I just get a, like a condensed version? So there's, there's got to be some phones that are completely paid for, right, or no?
No.
So not even keys?
No, he did not want that.
Oh, okay. So, so then, so if that's not there, then we're talking 50s and 20s? That's it?
Right.
Move to approve.
Motion by Maloney, second. Second by Feeny. Any question?
I'm looking here under, it's saying clerk 300 from clerk. I'm looking here under, it's saying clerk, three hundred from clerk fund, you know, the three hundred from TIF funds. Is that, is that monthly, or is that yearly?
It's annually.
Let's just take care of the rest of the year.
I just want to make it clear as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, because in the past, we always said was, did we, was it somebody that, like Keith, you're calling them all the time? And I believe one of the reasons the clerk's position wasn't with the, is because they're in their office most, you know, most of the time you can call them on their landline.
But we are heading, we are heading, right, good. We should.
You know, so that was, you know, that was the criteria before.
Okay, anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number thirty-eight, amendment to section seven-point-zero-four, flexible work arrangements covering various sections of our policy.
All right, this one I've got, I promise. The, this arose because one employee was asking if she could, or I'm sorry, if they could go to reduced hours, and we've never had this issue as a village before. So, because of that, the staff wanted some guidance on whether or not it's a good idea to allow for reduced hours. And one thing that the workforce is currently moving towards is more of this flex scheduling or less than forty-hour, yet still benefit-eligible employment hours. So, what's, the consensus on the Human Resources Committee was to permit people working less than forty hours to still accrue benefits provided that they work above thirty hours per week. But the, this would be approved under the following conditions. Firstly, if there was no change to the amount of service that was provided to the citizens of the village. Secondly, the department director had to approve the request and ensure that the department would continue to function at, at its current level of operational effectiveness. And thirdly, the administrator would have to concur and be the final approval process. Going through, starting at section seven-zero-four, you can see that the breakdown based on the FTE percent, and I think that this is a good way to, to ensure retention of employees and be an attractive employer in the future.
Move to approve.
Motion by Maloney.
Second.
Second by Zagami. On the question?
I do have a question. I was reading that with the work into the evening hours. I mean, I know at one time we had people that worked into the evening hours or whatever. They came in late and they worked, but that isn't when staff is here, and it just, it didn't work real well. It's not that they didn't work, it's just that they were not available to staff, they were not available to the public, they weren't, you know. So, I'd be a little cautious. I don't mind the reduced hours.
I guess I read that, that it'd be left to the discretion of the department head and the administrator. I, I can't tell you how many times I come in here to sign vouchers, and Sarah, I had to look at your name, Jenna, because I knew it was Sarah. And, I mean, I come in the door, because I see your car over here, I mean, last night I came here at seven-thirty, eight o'clock, and I started whistling right away. And she always laughs because she thinks it's so funny, because I'm announcing myself that I'm in the building, so I don't want her to get nervous, but, but yet she's not here for staff. So, I, I also thought of that, but I, I think the discretion of the department heads will look at that and say, you know, is this somebody for, for the public or not? And, and I think the way she's handling her flex is really well. And, and I think there's other things that happened, you know, for however it all works, but I, I guess I was comfortable with that. My, my only concern on this was that we wouldn't allow employees to go to thirty, thirty-two hours, and then have to hire more staff and then have more benefits. So, the way this was all done out, if you do the math, if you, if four people go down to thirty hours, you know, and then, then they, they actually end up paying more for the benefits, and it equals exactly, so that the village is not losing one penny. That was my biggest concern, that we weren't adding more payroll to the process. And, and then on, on top of this, if, if we can give more flexibility, and if people are happier and able to enjoy their families more, and have a better work balance and home balance, I think it's a no-brainer.
And I, I think it's important for, for the public to understand that this is a graduated scale, so.
Yep.
There's no benefits below thirty hours, and then it's graduated percentage of what they have to pay towards their health insurance, for dental insurance. So, it's a wash. We're not, the village isn't paying anymore by offering this. Obviously, not everybody's gonna take care of it, and then the burden is on the department directors in conjunction with the administrator to make sure that nothing slips on the work end of it, that we're still accountable to the public during all our hours of operation.
So, we have to start getting more people.
And just-
And if that wasn't the case, I, I would vote no, but they, I think you did a very good job of putting this policy together, so.
Just to really emphasize this point, if there's any negative change in how the village department would operate, the rest of this becomes moot because it wouldn't be approved. That's the, that's the top-level concern of this. And if you go through and read, and read this policy, you can see that every, that there's a six-month trial period to make sure that it's in the public's best interest. And then every, every six months or every year afterward, it has to be revisited. So, there's always a constant evaluation of whether or not things are operating in the public good.
So, and perhaps Nate, as a follow to that, in our, put the six months out, January, when we have our first HR committee meeting, we put that on to you, Jenna, we'll put it on the board and try to get some feedback on how the program went.
I look forward to it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirty-nine, write-off approximately one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and seventy-one cents in accrued interest receivable on personal property taxes, and seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars and twenty-four cents on the principal portion of delinquent personal property taxes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Maloney, second by Ermely. On the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number forty, budget transfer moving seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars and sixty-one cents from line item one-zero-dash-zero-six-dash-five-six-nine-zero-zero-dash-three-three-six-dash-zero-zero-zero to line number one-zero-dash-zero-six-five-six-nine-hundred-dash-eight-twelve-dash-zero-zero-zero.
Move to approve.
Motion by Maloney.
Second.
Second by Zagami. On the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number forty-one, proposal to reconcile Safer budget deficit with the town of Rid Mountain. I guess I will kind of address some background, I'm sure Barb and Hushane can chime in with some of the history. Reader's Digest version is, when Safer was started back in 2013, there was some significant sums of startup expenses, and those first probably year or two expenses, that was never really run through the Safer Board. Some of these funds, we had a meeting, by June twenty-fourth, it was myself, the administrator, Keith Donner, finance director, Jessica, and Jenna was there, two, you were there, right?
For the meeting last week?
Yes.
No.
Jessica was.
It was just Jessica.
Yeah. You were there for the original one when we talked-
I was there for the meeting.
Oh, yeah, the original one.
On Tuesday.
And then Rid Mountain's, the town president there, the administrator, and their finance director. There's a lot of information going back in history, some of it is, Reader's Digest version, they spent about six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars basically in debt on Safer through the end of 2017. The, with the breakdown between the two communities, put the village's portion at about two-hundred-and-sixteen, or I'm sorry, ours at four-hundred-and-forty-six. I remember, get my glasses on here. And, and the, for the town was about between two-sixteen, two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand. There were some exchanges between administrators regarding this, and they, the town's response was that they felt they owed about a hundred-and-ten thousand versus the two-hundred-and-twenty, We sat down with this, and, and there's a lot of points on both sides, but bottom line, and after talking to, to Barb a little bit on this, we expensed a lot of expenses for Safer, you know, Matt's here, and he could probably chime in, he was part of this meeting too. The former administrator, former finance director, expensed a lot of money to Safer District because they were running a deficit, and one of the comments made at the meeting is, it was kind of a blank check. The former, our former administrator said, here, go ahead, get what you need, get what you need. Problem is, none of this ran through the Safer Board, and at the time, the village was serving as the fiscal agent for Safer. They've since got their own fiscal agent. And none of this was run through the Safer Board. Everything should have been run through Safer Board so that it could be approved to be expensed. I don't know all the factors that went into it, but we dropped the ball, the village dropped the ball on our end of it, we upheld what was required of the agreement under this, under putting Safer together. And so, we were left trying to figure out, how do we reconcile this, you know, years after this, because it's still there. There's no doubt the money was expensed, it was used by Safer. However, the village did not hold up their obligation, and the towns' end argument to this is, had we known, we could have taken steps, the Safer Board could have adjusted some of the expenditures, we could have planned accordingly or made adjustments on the fly. And to that point, they're right. They didn't have the ability to address it because they were never, they didn't know anything about it. And speaking with the administrator in Rid Mountain, she said they got emails from the, our administrator saying, everything was going great, everything's going great with no mention of this deficit. So, when we sat down, yeah, I, I think it would be almost impossible to go back and, and pin every little expense down and try to reconcile this. So, my suggestion and offer at the meeting was, would you be willing to split the difference? They know they owe us money, the question is, how much do they have to pay, and how much are we culpable for because we didn't uphold our end of, of the bargain on keeping the Safer Board apprised and running the expenditures through the Safer Board? So, the splitting the difference would end up with roughly a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand the town would have to pay, and we would be paying the other half. So, it's about fifty-five thousand dollars would be the difference between the two. We need to be good neighbors when we share services and we have consolidated departments. It works, it saves both of our communities money, and it gives us a higher level of service than we would have if we had our own departments. It clearly would cost the village a lot more if we had our own fire department, our own police department. So, for the sake of mending our relationship with the town and reconciling this so we can move forward, because Safer works, my, my suggestion was split, split the difference. Town chairman Al Opel said he would take this to his board meeting, which I believe is tomorrow night, and he's gonna make the, the same proposal to his board. So, that's my suggestion that I put forward to meeting, and I, I think it is, I think it's the best possible outcome right now.
Yeah, because when I first discovered this, much to my dismay, was told, do you know? I said, no, I do not know. I brought it to Safer Board and said, we've got an issue, you know? And I explained to you how we still have to stay diligent upon, we still pay some bills that we get reimbursed, and sometimes they fall behind a little bit, but I wasn't sure how we were going to handle it either. I mean, you know, that's a lot of money to find out all of a sudden. I did check back on what in the world, and, and Matt knows that one of the first things, and this was before, actually, this was before Chief Savage was started, was, I said, we need, Safer needs to get their own finance. We cannot go through the village because it's, you know, there's issues, and we need to just separate. It was, you know, we did discover, of course, that in the unknowing, was that the budgets were not realistic, unknowing, you know? Revenues were budgeted at a hundred percent, not what they collect. It goes on and on and on, and I would just be very happy if we can get something and clear this off the books.
I move to approve and reconcile the Safer budget deficit with the town of Rid Mountain to a twenty-five-point-six-oh percent for the town at a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars, and the village being responsible for the balance of seventy-four-point-four percent at four-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty dollars.
Okay. Motion by Maloney, second by Ermely.
Just a comment, I wasn't informed about this until Barb brought it to the meeting at Safer. We never talk about it at any of our meeting, except that time. You were the first one, you brought it out, and-
That was what, four or five years later?
Right.
Yeah, it's been just hanging out there. Budgets haven't been matching. I can't imagine you guys having to work with this, and it had to be really frustrating, really frustrating to have these budgets coming in. It's glaring, and it's not, it's not being handled.
It was kind of a, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I think with this issue, that bring up, I think that the skid hills should add one dollar to their ticket to cover these expenses, and he's not willing to do it, I think Mr. Skinner, he's not willing to do it because he doesn't want to increase. In honesty, I talked to the people who ski there, and I asked him, are you willing to pay one dollar extra for a service, for ambulance and, and other services related to the injury out there? They didn't even blink on it, said, what's this, a dollar? And I'm not sure why Mr. Skinner resists that. I think we should approach it a different way, or have a meeting with him to convince him it is to the interests of our municipalities, because we cannot bear the expense of other people who doesn't live in this area. I think that should be done, because he said, no, that doesn't mean shit to our hand, and said, okay, you're gonna walk away from it, because this is expense to our taxpayer.
I think Safer should act, the board themselves should, because I know Rid Mountain has been, because it is Rid Mountain that, you know, that is, it's in, but I just think that maybe if Safer itself could talk to them.
I, two separate issues, I agree with you, and Matt, let's get that on the agenda for next Safer Board meeting to have this discussion. I would certainly be willing, hopefully, Mr. Opel would be willing to go and meet with them and have a discussion with this. Did a similar issue when we had, when we started the pawnbroker ordinance, pawnbrokers charge a transaction fee of a dollar fifty and went back to PD to help fund that program. So, there's precedent for doing these types of things, we can bring it up, but I agree.
Especially with the expansion of the hill and, and more people, and it's hard getting payments from skiers that they're on the town. Paul Matt can answer to that more than I can, but for sure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number forty-two, proposal to modify the draft intergovernmental agreement with the town of Weston for reconstruction of Ross Avenue from Riverbend to Kirsten Road by sharing the cost of the roundabout on a fifty-to-fifty percent basis.
Move to approve.
Motion by Maloney.
Second.
Second by Zagami. On the question?
I think it would behoove us not to enter into disagreement and keep this, or move this to a fifty-fifty sharing with a seventy percent possibility of grants, I believe, from the state federal, and, I mean, and if the day ever did come that- from, from the state federal, and I mean, and if the day ever did come that we would share in this, to have this done in this manner is outstanding. And I think this is working with our neighbors in a really good way.
I, I agree. Obviously, the, the town, at some point is, will probably be absorbed by the village at some point, and so having that, having that relationship with the town and being able to work jointly on some of these projects, I think is, is very important because it will benefit both municipalities.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think if doing a fifty-fifty gets that roundabout in, it's well worth it.
Oh, definitely.
Oh, that corner is terrible, and I don't think it helps the town or the village to have someone get killed there because with that possibly building up through there some more, I just.
And I can tell you from a safety standpoint, the roundabout will definitely decrease accidents and will be a much safer, safer intersection.
And that fifty-fifty does it, I completely agree.
Yep.
At the, any intersection, Mr. President, at any intersection, average intersection what we have in the village, you can have seventy different accidents. At the roundabout, it's two accidents, and those two are just rubbing each other, it's not T accident or whatever. So it's much safer and I think it should be up kept and sharing costs is definitely worth it.
I agree. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number forty-three, authorize staff to begin recruitment for fleet informant position and process refilling anticipated vacancy for the mechanic's position.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Zagami. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number forty-four, discussion and possible action on feedback to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation proposal for paving and repaving of Business Fifty, Highway Fifty-One from State Highway Twenty-Nine through Rothschild, Weston, and Schofield to Depot Street.
You know why I'm looking at you. You know, my voice changed, that doesn't mean I'm getting angry, that's not it really. It's just, that's the way I talk, so I'm sorry, I apologize for that. But what they proposing here is exactly what they said before. They said, we resurface it, couple of years later, we come back and reconstruct it. Now, we are eight or ten years later on, we talking the same issue, same proposal coming back to us.
Six years.
Six years?
Six years.
I don't think we should accept that. It is wasting taxpayer money, and we just can't do that. We already, I believe they spent two or two and a half million dollars on that resurfacing. That's another one again, two to two and a half million dollars again, and it is not nice to spend the taxpayer money like this. If you were combining that two and a half and two and a half, that's a five million dollars. That's not even ten million dollars project, but again, let's say assume it's ten million dollars project, that's a half fifty percent of the cost. We already spending on the project.
When I heard this too, I thought, well, that's just throwing taxpayer money right out the window.
So I, I'd like to recommend we pass another resolution here and recommend to Department of Transportation to build, rebuild the project, reconstruct it, bring it up to the standard, and feed that slot to other community, like City of Madison. They spent eighty-five million dollars on East Washington. They have landscaping, they did the project all the way sidewalk to sidewalk, and I don't believe they even talk about taking over the road to the City of Madison. I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that.
My comments are, you know, I read through Keith Reether, Reffer, and had some conversations, and they're trying to get a meeting with the three communities. One of the points that Administrator Donner made is that we need to get all three communities on the same page here, because I know there was some talk about Rothschild possibly, you know, agreeing to take over that stretch of the roadway. However, this does impact all of our municipalities, and I think it's important that we're on the same page. And I know the public secretary from Schofield was trying to get a meeting with the DOT and our three communities, and I think that should probably be the first step. We've already passed a resolution, you know, and reading through some of the meeting stuff is that you're not supposed to like repass or, you know, try to reinforce once you've passed a resolution. So I would, I would like to ask Hushang to attend this meeting because you probably know it's better than anybody else.
I was going to do the same.
You know, I mean, I can show up and I'll support you, but you're going to know the background a lot better than I have. So I'd like you to attend that meeting that we have, and I'd like the three communities, hopefully we can all be on the same page, because I think it's going to carry more weight if we give one specific direction. And I agree with what you're saying, I hate to have waste taxpayer money, whether it's the state or not, I don't want to waste anybody's money on something where we're just going to rip it up in a couple of years and have to redo it. We're still responsible for our local taxpayers and some of that goes, goes to the state and comes back to us.
Well, it wouldn't be bad if it wouldn't be that the humps are going to come right back.
Exactly.
Yeah, I guess one of the comments made when we, the people from the DOT was that their design process and because of how they want to redo some of the intersections, they're going to have to acquire real estate, and just with the timelines there, they figured it was going to be four to five years before they'd have all the real estate acquired and finished design plans. So I said, that's why they threw the overlay in there, so they could at least get the driving surface, so it's not all bumpy, so.
Do we know what intersection are, need the real estate?
The one at, I think the big one was over by where Highway Twenty-Nine comes down to Business Fifty-One, where, what would that be, where Grand Avenue kind of connects?
Old Grand.
Old Grand, and then also at Jelnik, and I think they're looking at redoing the one too by Log Cabin, so.
The Log Cabin, I think that intersection is wide enough, as a matter of fact, I talked to John Lightwell, he was the, he was the administrator at the DOT, and I asked him why that is so huge. He said, well, we designed this for next fifty years, Hushang. The fifty years is not here yet, that intersection was just not, not too long ago.
Yeah, I, I was just letting you know that.
I know what you're saying, I'm just making a comment about what they, what they tell us.
Just, just to piggyback off of that, when I was out talking with members of the community about some of their most important issues, I cannot begin to tell you the number of times that one blasted intersection kept coming up over by Log Cabin. One of them said then, that their spouse's adjustment gets knocked out two or three times a year because they have to keep driving over that dang place. You know, it's, it's a total half-assed job.
Can't fool.
Over, over by Schofield and Grand, that portion of it. And it's, it's a half-assed job if we keep doing it over and over again and a total waste, like has been said several times.
Okay, well, it makes a little bit more sense what Michael said. That, that the reasoning is five, six, seven years, and then it's going to be some grand design, you know, probably four more roundabouts, four lanes, you know, the whole bit, by level. But, and then the overlay would kind of make sense, but still at a two and a five million dollars for a couple of years, wow, that's.
Well, that's what they did the previous one, and, and this is.
But then there was no fix afterwards.
No.
Right, right.
What they fixed, they did, I think that was last year, they had at least twenty vehicles during the patching on the road.
Right, right.
And they did on, on the Camp Phillips also, and they did on the Schofield. But again, these are expenses we paying for. You know, what we're, we are taxpayer, sitting in here, we are part of it, these taxpayer. So I think they should pay, spend our money wisely, that's, that's all I'm going to say. And I'll be happy to go to the meeting, Mr. President.
Just, well, just for reference, the, the meeting is on July eighteenth, so.
July eighteen?
I would, yes, July eighteenth. So I would like to, after the meeting, bring this back to the board on our first meeting in August, and hopefully we can have a specific resolution from all three municipalities on the DOT's position or proposal.
So we don't need any motion?
We don't need motion right now. I think it's important that we have that sit-down first, get all three communities on the same page, and Hushang's going to be filling me, you know, right there and doing all the discussion because he knows a lot more than I ever will about it, or probably care to know about it.
Where is that meeting?
I don't know yet. He just says, they haven't said.
Yeah, because Mark called me, Mark, the director of Public Work.
Mark Wood.
Right, he called me up and talked about the meeting, I said, I think that's a great idea, just talk to Keith and let us know when you want it, and then I'm sure they're going to come to the meeting.
Just let us know a time and location then, Michael. Okay, all right, remarks from trustees. Barb?
Nothing.
Ee?
None.
Hushang?
Thank you.
Mark?
Nope.
Nate?
Have a safe and happy Independence Day.
All right, oh, I knew there had to be something. I, I just, under my breath, I just. And remarks from the President. On our next meeting, I would like to have, discuss TIF funding. I had conversations with Administrator Donner, and I wanted to know, because I know there's been some requests from businesses, on how, you know, TIF money is expensed. And he said, historically, the prior administrators basically just made that decision. And I asked what other communities do, and he said, there are other communities that get together with their, with their fiscal agent, with their financial advisor, and have a formula, and it's run through a committee and then it runs through the board. I think that's how it should be done, I don't agree with just one person arbitrarily making this. I think it needs to be tied into.
Yeah, they do.
I think, yeah, there is some formalized, because they use it.
Well, I, if, if my conversation with Keith was correct, that previously, in the past, it was one person just kind of arbitrarily made some decisions, and I don't know if it went to the board. So since we don't have something specifically in writing on how these things should be processed, I think it's important that we should have some formality to it so that it runs through a committee and it should be based on, you know, the increment that's going to be created. But I, what that committee should be, I don't know, it should be the CDA, should be Planning Commission, Finance, you know, but ultimately, it needs to run through a committee, run to the board. I'd like to see a process formalized. I spoke with Keith about that, so I would like to see that, if they have time to get that done on the next agenda or, you know, possibly in August, just so we have a formalized process for doing that, so.
Yeah, we're very close because I spent quite a bit of time on the large, we've got two different application processes that would run through CDA.
I saw, yeah, I saw the, the grant applications.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, is that the same or is that a little different? Or is that?
That would be the same. The next step would be, that Keith's talking about, is utilizing the, like Greg Johnson from Ellers to kind of, we get a lot of requests for, for the money, and there's, as Keith said to you, there was never a formal process. So we've been trying to put a formal process in place. We've been using the CDA committee because they're the ones that are responsible for the TIF districts, and then they would make recommendations to the board. We've also talked at CDA that they would be the group that would kind of monitor them because there's never been anyone that basically monitored those, anything that was given out in the past, so.
And I know Keith said he was, you kind of started working on it, I just wanted to put out there, I'd like to see it on an agenda in the future, get that process formalized. So.
Yeah, we've been working through CDA.
People posted on how much time you think you'll have to put, you know, a formal, you know, draft policy together for review and, and then whatever specific committee, if that's a CDA. But I would like to see it on a, an agenda fairly soon, because I know there's requests.
Yeah, the applications, we have had a couple of people take out applications, and then we were going to, depending on what they were coming back with, talk to Greg on that, just because it depends on which TIF district we're talking about too, because TIF one right now, a lot of the money is tied up in Camp Hope Center, so.
Yeah, I am just like a nice transparent, you know, how we proceed with these, because I know there's been questions in the past and.
Right, no, and we've been attempting to work on that because we were never comfortable with the previous procedure, so.
Okay, all right, thanks, John. Future items, next meeting date, July fifteenth, and then August fifth, July ninth. So we'll be hosting the South Area Business Association Local Government Luncheon, that going to be right here?
It is.
John? Okay, all right. I can't, I can't attend because I will be, I have a Safer Board meeting that date, so if any other trustee wants to go.
Yeah, I'll say, because I sent an email to all board members, I haven't heard back from anyone, so I didn't know if I needed to register anybody.
Really? I normally say, I must have missed that, I'm sorry. I do.
We have a Safer Board meeting that day.
Oh.
Same time.
Okay. There you go.
So if you can, get back to Renee and let her know, and she'll get you registered. All right, with. Hushang?
That November thirtieth Saturday, is that today going to be that Friday?
It's a November eleventh.
Eleven.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
It's a federal holiday.
Yeah.
It's Veterans Day.
Yeah.
November eleventh.
Yep, yes, November eleventh.
Thank you.
Okay, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to move?
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? No. Being adjourned at seven oh six P M. Thank you, everyone.